Again, thanks for being with us. Our first item of business, commissioners, is our minutes. We have one set from July 5th, our last commission meeting. Do we have any corrections or comments on those?
I saw no corrections.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, would you acknowledge Chancellor Peterson just his presence in our meeting?
Just want to welcome all of you here, but acknowledge Chancellor Peterson from the university with us tonight, so thank you. Our next item is a public hearing for consideration to reopen the 2017 budget and make proposed amendments to the budget in all funds. And so, we'd like to go to that part and do a quick review. First of all, I'd like to excuse Seth Overson, our county clerk. He is at a UAC conference and presenting today. So, with the help of IT, we'll muddle through this and propose, show the changes that we would like to make, and then open it for a public hearing. Probably the most important part of the summary sheet here is the bottom line. Back at the first of the year, the original budget that was approved for 2017, the numbers were quite dramatically different. The revenue line was at $32,000,420,000, and the expense line was at $39,000,000. We had approximately a $6,700,000 budget that we were using to balance out of reserves. We also did an amendment in February to correct some of the changes there. And after going through the budget with every department and making some other corrections, we want to present this. The totals that we would be looking at tonight are with the budgetary revenue with the $36,101,289, and the expenses are at $38,000, $38,908,144, or a difference of approximately $2.8 million. So, we have shrunk it just over $4 million as far as being able to make cuts and balances. So, having said that, then the next page is in the column that is under the current year budget changes. There are a lot of items, and so I'm not going to try and read those in tonight. We do have copies available, and it is, I believe, Barry did we post it online? It will be tonight after this. But anyway, these are the changes that make up the remainder of that approximately $4 million in budgetary cuts. So, if we go to, let's see, you're on page two. Let's pause right there on the bottom of that. You'll see that I'm looking at Fund 10-3890 with the general fund surplus. You can see that that changed from the $1,008,000 to $1,029,000, and that encompasses all of the revenue changes and expenses that are in Fund 10 based on that page. The next one that I think is important, and if you'll just slowly scroll through these, Barry, as we go, Justice Court, for example, has had a $22,000 change in it. That was one that we've had, excuse me, discussion on already where the Justice Court took on helper, Justice Court here in the building and with Judge Carpenter. So, that was a significant change. The other departments following that are some minor ones. We had already previously adjusted it. If we could go to, again, the Attorney's Office in Fund 10-4145, you'll see that there's a change of about $15,000 there based in some revenue and some expenses that had to be taken care of. So, that was a significant change. The next ones, departments are all minor in regards to it. The one, engineering, made a significant change in what they were going to do this year in Fund 4163, and that was an $8,000 change. Safety below that was $9,000. GIS was $19,400. And a lot of these things that are being changed are equipment requests that the county would have purchased in this budget year, but obviously, we are making those changes. Also, there have been other items that have come out of their budgets. There's been retirement of people and personnel in various departments that have not been replaced, and so we are working hard to, you know, make a difference in what we need to do with our budget. The next one is under the industrial park, and that has a change of $78,000 in it. That's our maintenance weeds. We were able to make some transfers into another department, so we'll see that come back in part, but that's a significant. The next one that we should look at is on the ambulance service, Fund 10, again, 4227. There is a decrease in that budget of $17,500, and again, significant changes that were made. We had some overstated employee benefits, and then you can see the other minor changes that have gone on there, but they have worked hard to make sure that they are very efficient with the budget. The next one that we should go to is the library, 10-4520 with the decision that was made in regards to the bookmobile. There is a reduction of $28,000 there, and again, we appreciate those who participated in those discussions over the last probably month period of time. The other one that is always very interesting and which had a change is in our contributions in Fund 10-4820. There are many things that we have to put money into from the general fund, and this is an accumulation of what those are. The, all the way from the association of governments to the senior center and the senior care, economic development, recreation, and fairgrounds all have to have monies put into them. So, but looking at it and making the changes that we needed to, we were cut $134,515 out of that particular items that were, needed to be scaled back. The next one is under travel, and there's, there was an increase in transient room tax, and so, there was the ability basically to see the increase come in, but then we also decreased what was being taken out of the reserve the prior years there. So, that again is good news as far as hotels being used in our area. Within the leisure services or the recreation, I'm not going to go through all of those. What they were, made some significant changes as far as their fee structure, and so, not only do we see a decrease in revenue, or a decrease in expenses, commissioners, we also see an increase in revenue through Carbon Rec. They've made a great move, and we appreciate all that they are doing as far as reestablishing themselves out of the fairgrounds and utilizing the facilities there. The next one is within our public lands area, which is Fund 20-4250. Many of you know that Rex has retired, Rex Sackel retired, and we appreciate the work and dedication he gave to the county, but with that retirement, there has been an adjustment in that budget of $18,900. Animal control in the same Fund 20-4253, there's been a $25,000 decrease, and that's in addition to what we had already worked with them in reducing that previously. Within our Class B roads, we've had a decrease of $10,000, but we've also seen an increase in revenue from the gas tax and from the state allocations. So, that's good news within our road shop and our highway department. If we go to Fund 21, which is the Carbon County RDA, many of you know that Ridge Road is part of a redevelopment area, and monies have been set aside and reserved. We had also indicated we would put $150,000 additional county revenue into that fund for some development. At this point in time, we are going to take that $150,000 out, but the $500,000 because of the way that the RDAs are set up and their timetables are set to expire this year, so we really need to utilize that $500,000 in that Ridge Road redevelopment district. So, we'll continue to pursue project or projects that would benefit the community as before the year expires, and so otherwise, we'll be redistributing those taxes. Out at the fairgrounds, we have, this is Fund 26 now, there are several things that have happened with it. One is an increase of revenue both through Carbon Rec, but also through the use of the event center and the fairground facilities, including the gun range. So, we're seeing an increase of revenue, projected revenue of up for another $33,000. We've also seen then changes as far as benefits and some of the maintenance items that we're going to do of $25,000 in expense savings, and also a decrease in the event center itself as far as the expenses go. Carbon County Futures was changed, this is economic development, by $20,000, $230,000. The $20,000 have been set aside in contemplating and putting together a regional conference, and that, we have been asked to postpone that, so we are removing that from the budget So, even though it showed as a revenue coming in because of the general fund allocation, it also shows as a decrease going back out. Fund 29 is the emergency telephone, basically the 911 and dispatch. We are seeing a change in that because of the way that the structure is set up, and Commissioner hopes addressed that in a previous meeting. So, we're seeing a decrease in the revenue, but we're also seeing a decrease in the expense. So, it really is a wash as far as the budget goes, but that program is changing where the monies will go directly to dispatch and instead of going through the county. Fund 45 was our capital projects fund, and we are seeing a decrease, excuse me, an increase in funding there, and we are also then seeing an increase in programs. A lot of these are CIB-type projects where the funding has been available and/or grant monies, and so, there's a little bit of a change that has gone on in Fund 45. Let's go to, the rest of those are just kind of through. Let's go to the Municipal Building Authority Fund 56. This fund has an adjustment to it of $267,000, and that mostly pertains to some proceeds that we received on the construction of the salt shed in Nine Mile Canyon, and also monies that have come from the special service district, our Recreation and Transportation Service District, and also in regards to the Seventh District Court, a building that the state is building. So, those monies are a pass-through for us. It's a state project, but as we've talked again before, the cost of the building, it is a Carbon County building being paid for by the state of Utah and funded through bonding. So, it is not a taxable item or a taxable item to the citizens of Carbon County, but it will be paid for by the state of Utah even though it will be our building. We also see, and in, again, the 56 account, there's a $98,000 adjustment based on the finalizing of the Nine Mile Canyon paving, and also in the court complex, an increase in their funding because of the new building that's going, going on with the Seventh District Court. Let's see. And really, that finishes up kind of an overall review. What we're really looking at, commissioners, tonight is to make that adjustment down to, again, let's go to the summary page, if we could, Barry. Page one. So, what we're really looking at, having worked through this with Seth and with the clerk's audit, or office, is a budgeted expenses at this point in time in the year of $38,908,144 with revenue projections at $36,101,289. If you have any comments or questions before we open the public hearing, let's go ahead and do those, and we could turn the lights on.
I was just going to say that that's, you know, as you previously mentioned, roughly a 3.7 million in adjustments and corrections to the budget.
Commissioner Hopes, anything you'd like to add before we go into public hearing?
No comments.
Okay. We'd like to go ahead and move then into a public hearing in regards to these adjustments to the budget. If there's anyone that would like to come forward as you do so, please state your name so we have it on the record, and we'd be happy to hear from you. And we'll go ahead and open that public hearing at basically 4:47, 4:48. So, if you'd like to comment on, on the budget, please, we'd love to hear from you. We've been working hard to make some changes in that. Obviously, we're not done, but we'd, you know, love to hear your input. We've talked before that it comes down to some of those things of, you know, what are we as a community, what are we as citizens willing and wanting to pay for? And there are going to have to be some of those discussions, obviously, going forward. I don't think anybody ever opposes decreases, so. Not seeing anyone come forward on this. We'll go ahead and close this at 4:50 as far as the public hearing goes. Thank you for those of you that are here today. We would also then like to review and a possible adoption then of the, these amendments to the county budget for 2017 for all the funds.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we'll go ahead and put that, we'll need to sign that, commissioners, at the end of the meeting, and then it can be officially posted that that's the new budget. And thank you for, for doing that.
If I might just add, going forward, we'll continue to go through the same process and make additional changes to the budget for both 2017 as we're reviewing for 2018 as well.
Very good. Our next item is a discussion regarding the runoff and other concerns at the Carbon County Fairgrounds, radio control, fly field. We'll turn some time to Brad Curtis if you'd like to come up. And again, even though we've announced, if you'd state your name, Brad, and we'll be happy to hear from you.
My name's Brad Curtis, and I was wondering about, you know, the runoff and that that's coming off of the soccer field and some other things.
Brad, can you check and see if your green light is on your mic?
It is.
Oh. Maybe pull it closer to your mouth.
Okay. How's that?
Little better.
Okay.
So, Brad, just for your information, and I think I've explained this to you before, the drainage that's coming off the soccer fields because they're watering so much to try and get the grass established, we're seeing a little bit extra water coming off of there until that grass gets fully established. It is on the punch list. Nielsen Construction is aware that they need to cut a ditch that will take, they've already cut one on the west side of the fields that takes the water west and over to the ditch, but there is another one that is needed, and they're aware of it. I don't know when, they're, they're supposed to be here sometime this week to cut that other ditch and finish some of the other punch list items that we have for them, and that is included on that, to cut a ditch, to take that water that's running off of the soccer fields and take it around to that retention base, and that is on, to be the northeast side of the airport.
Is there going to be anything done for like erosion?
At this point, probably not. It'll just be a V ditch, so the erosion will be pretty minimal. It'll just channel the water so it doesn't continue to flow and cascade across the airport like it is now.
Okay. All right, then, I was wondering about the windsock being taken care of?
And I think that's something that we can take care of. I think that's, I haven't talked with any of the commissioners about this in length, but it was mentioned that this is probably something that we can have maintenance go out and put the windsock back up, grease the bearings so it, it's not squeaky all the time. That just goes into maintenance. I think part of, part of what needs to happen is, is the coordination or the communication. You said that windsock had been squeaky for a while. I don't know of any employees that go out there and have RC planes, so if there are issues like this, a simple note to the commission or to the maintenance staff that there is an issue out there, and we can certainly address those. I think that's something that can be easily remedied.
Maintenance has mentioned that, you know, if you let them know about these things, just give them a call directly. Within a couple of weeks, they can get it taken care of. They have a busy schedule, especially in the summertime with everything that they're doing as far as spraying weeds and spraying for mosquitoes, but within a couple of weeks, if you let them know, they can go do some maintenance and prevention work so that it doesn't have to be repair work.
Okay. All right. Then I was also wondering about the oiling of the runway?
We had that scheduled, Brad, for this year, and then as we started to have to cut back in the budgets, they like, they like to do that every three to five years, so we are really at the very end of that just for asphalt preservation. And the painting, I'm not sure what we'll do. We'll have to, you know, work with the club and others that use that facility, but I'm sure that it, as we've talked, it'll be on, you know, next year's budget as far as being able to preserve that asphalt. Don't know that we'll be able to do anything with it this year, but that was the last word when I talked with the fairground supervisor out there.
Okay.
So, probably one more year on that one, Brad.
All right, and then it needs to be graded out around the outer perimeter of the airport landing strip?
Is that, is that on the punch list?
Are you talking on the? If it's inside the perimeter fence, the cable fence?
Yeah.
That's not anything to do with the contractor unless that was an area that they staged in.
Maintenance for the?
So, it's within the fence itself?
Yeah, it'd be part of the maintenance of it.
I can, I can talk with him and see if next time they have a grader out there, if they could, you know, to go ahead and smooth that. I'd be happy to check on that one, Commissioner.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time. I see you guys knocked off some of this off the list, so I appreciate it.
And like I said earlier, if we understand and know what the issues are, not that they'll be able to be taking care of like the oil all at once because we have to budget for those things, but when we know what they are, if we can communicate back and forth, we can, we can certainly work on creating a punch list and working through that so we can fix some of those issues.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next item is consideration of request for Carbon County officials to participate in ETV 10 News Program Inside Eastern Utah and discuss a possible, and discuss impossible approval of a contract. Shannon, turn the time to you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Childs, and Scotty Draper. And Scotty and I both work for ETV, and we have a couple of things that we'd like to talk to you guys about. First of all, we understand your, the importance of the contribution that you guys make to Chad Booth and the county seat, and what that has allowed you guys to be able to do on a statewide level, and just like to bring it to your attention that we at ETV have a few things on a more local level that we think could benefit the county and your constituents. So, I think that transparency and approachability are two things that are pretty important to our community and that they'd like to see from their elected officials, and we think that we can help you with that with these two programs. So, the first one that I will just touch on a little bit is called Inside Eastern Utah. It's a 30-minute production that we created at ETV that talks about just current events, things that are happening in the community with organizations, whether they're not-for-profit or for-profit organizations, just things that they're doing within their organization and events that they're having, and then we also would love to talk about some of the politics. And we would keep all of this, we do keep all of this super hyper-local, so it's not statewide. It's just Castle Country, Carbon and Emery Counties. And then the other one is called Heart of Utah, and Heart of Utah is in its sixth season, I believe, and we have a gentleman named Randy Johnson who hosts that for us, and he's been able to get some really good interviews that have to do with our local area from people that are outside of the area that are making decisions for us. So, we've had people, oh, let's see, and this should be in your packet, we've interviewed Orin Hatch, Mike Lee, Gary Herbert several times, Greg Bell, Spencer Cox, Jason Chaffetz has been on several times, Rob Bishop, Chris Stewart, and mostly, they come to our studio, but sometimes we go to them to film that. So, both of these shows air on Channel 10. They're also published online with etv10news.com, and we put clips of them on our Facebook page and our YouTube channel, and we have provided you guys with analytics to all of that to see what the reach is, both local and statewide. So, we, and that's, that's what we're here to discuss. We'd like to answer any questions that you have, if you have any.
The analytics, Shannon, how, how far, because, you know, it's hard to tell from the, just the one page, but it looks like your primary reach is, is here in the area, but it looks like there is some reach outside?
Mm-hmm. There is, and, okay, so, sorry.
Yeah, so if you see that first graph, it obviously goes by state, and our widest reach is in Utah, of course, then outreach into California, Colorado, Oregon, just the surrounding states. Then the next graph represents our reach throughout Utah. Price is, of course, number one on that. Number two is actually Salt Lake City, and then we go down from there. So, the top 10 are shown there, and five of those cities are in Carbon or Emery Counties, and then the remaining five are in other areas of the state. Just to kind of give you guys a view on where this reach is going and what the demographic is.
Very good.
And this is just the last 30 days. This is kind of a constantly evolving and changing thing, so.
How do they reach these numbers? How do they get these?
So, these numbers are pulled from Google Analytics, which provides the tracking for the website, and then on the next page, the analytics are from our Facebook page, and those are pulled directly from Facebook.
I don't know that I have any other questions for you. I think for me, it's a matter of where our budgets are set and we're decreasing. I'm not sure that, you know, I would be inclined to try and do something this year. I'm also wondering, as we get ready for this coming season, if it could be a consideration and perhaps an application that we take a look at it through travel and tourism, if the reach was far enough and we could help target advertising within the county or for the county and other places like you've indicated with some commercials, I'm wondering if that's a good place that we might look at funding for those type of programs like we do with County Seat.
Yes, and we certainly understand, especially with tourism dollars, it's important to push that information out of the area. That's why we hoped those analytics would prove fruitful for the reach that we have outside of the area as well, so.
I guess a few questions just to mention, if I might, Chairman. In discussing with our staff and reaching out to some of our other local partners who, when we have a community message, they have been really good, as you have in the past, to get that out without a cost. And so, some of the concern is, is the principal behind paying it, and you compare to Chad Booth, which, yes, we pay for Chad Booth, and we pay quite a bit for Chad Booth. Part of the purpose of getting and, and being a client of Chad Booth's is the fact that we can get right in front of our state legislatures. We can get right in front of a lot of these other people. And as Commissioner Potter had mentioned, through travel and tourism, that might be a reason and a purpose. And as Commissioner Potter had mentioned, through travel and tourism, that might be a reason and a purpose if our reach is that far with ETV 10 News and, and the two programs that you've mentioned. But as far as, as local programming, as local events, as getting the message out locally behind what's happening politically, what we're working on, economic development here locally, I guess part of the concern is not so much the money, the $25,000 that you're asking, but the principle of?
Twenty-five hundred.
Yes, yes, twenty-five hundred. I appreciate the correction there, yes. But the, the principle behind, should we be paying for that when a lot of our local partners have always offered that as a, as a free service, especially when we're bringing them news? And so maybe, you know, as part of a, a package for a future budgetary item, could that be part of the consideration? If it's for outside of the area and would be eligible for TRT money that we might have available versus if we're bringing you news that is local news, if that couldn't be considered part of the same stuff that we're doing with all the other areas and venues of publicity?
Sure. Well, I think that we encompass a lot of different things. We encompass the newspaper, the print newspaper. We have a radio product, a radio news product and a TV news product. This is just the TV that we're talking about. And we're not going to stop covering things for the print newspaper just because we're doing this TV thing. Does that make sense? I don't think I explained that well. We will continue to cover county events and county commission meetings and that type of thing in the newspaper regardless.
I think it would be wonderful to add another venue of publicity. So being on the Health Department Board of Four Corners Mental Health, if we have something local that we want to talk about, you know, we can go to the radio stations and do some things. We'd love to include you as well. But I think that would be different than advertising the travel and tourism that we have here locally. That understandably maybe would be something that we're paying you to reach out to the rest of the state to bring here local. Whereas if it's, if it's local issues, even though it's the TV spots, I just view that as, as part of, of the local publicity that maybe we're, we're bringing you news of what's going on locally. And that's not necessarily us paying for advertisement. That's us providing awareness of what's going on. Can you see that I, I view there as, I view those two as a distinction?
Sure.
And we're hoping to add on to that, that this can be something that is more dictated through you since you have these guaranteed spots and guaranteed runnings, that you can really guide it in your direction versus us always going out and deciding who comes on our show. It gives you that guarantee and it gives you that dictation to be able to say, this is what I want to talk about. This is the message that I need to get out versus we can fit you in if we have space and it, having to juggle many other things and people with that. It gives you some guaranteed along with that, of course, advertising throughout the area that you mentioned.
I think with the, with the package that we're presenting, it kind of gives you the best of both worlds because we're offering you the commercials, the airtime, which that plays on every platform that this is, YouTube, our website, Facebook and the TV, ETV 10, Channel 10. So you're getting those commercials which would, that, what I envisioned was to, the tourist-type commercials. And we've already worked with tourism. She's got a lot of stuff that we could already throw on there that's ready to go. And then you get the other aspect, which is what Scotty spoke about, of you guys coming on and being able to reach your constituents. I, and hopefully these analytics, yes, we're going outside of the area, but we reach a lot of people inside the area as well. And I think that you need that. I think that our, that your, as elected officials, we need to be putting these issues out there before it comes up at a commission meeting so that people know what's happening. And I'm going to, I used the Bookmobile example prior, in an earlier discussion. Had people known that that was coming up, maybe through another outlet besides, the only way they could have known was looking at an agenda to see that it was on. Had we had an interview with you guys, you'd said, one or two or all three of you, and you could have said, well, these are some things that we have coming up and this is, the, these are the issues you're facing. If you, if you're interested in this, if you have an opinion on this, come to the commission meeting and talk about it with us before we make the decision. Don't wait until after. And that's what I, what we're hoping that we can help you guys with is to reach the community, to let them know that, you know what, we care about your opinion. These are the things that we have coming up. If you have an opinion on it, let us know. And, and you know, I give them another way to, to see that. We, the demographics that we cover, I feel like we hit every demographic, demographic in our county. Young and old, no matter what age, male or female, we have a platform for you to reach those people.
Thank you, Shannon, for that information. And Scotty, it's something that I think we should discuss further, especially as we get into this next year's, you know, budget cycle and, and could take and look at really what that might do for the community and, and what we could do to better, you know, help people understand those issues. So.
Great. And then I just have a quick question on your, the advertisement and promotion part of your budget that's set aside. What does that go for? I mean, could that be where that money comes from or partly in part, partly tourism?
Potentially, right, right now that primarily carries our legal noticing is what that is primarily used for.
You had two separate line items, I think. I could, I could be mistaken. I thought the legal notice one was $10,000 and then you had one for advertisement and promotion that was $75,000 on that budget. That was just?
You're, you're specifically looking in the tourism budget? Is that correct?
You know what? I don't know. I'm sorry. It was flashing so quickly up there. I just saw the line item was advertisement and promotion, $75,000. And then I, I noticed the legal one for $10,000.
If I, if I recall, it's not in the commission's budget, but it was in the tourism budget is where that one was. So the one that's in ours is for the advertising that we do for the county at large, not just the commission, but the other one that what's, that is in the travel and tourism is for like the county seat and the other productions and things that they are producing at this point in time. But that's why I keep pointing back to that one is that, you know, that's probably, if, if we could make it qualify and fit within those tourism dollars, it might be a very good way for us to put out not only promotions for travel, but also be able to air those.
Yeah, that's what we were envisioning as well.
So I'm, I'm sure that's where it is, not just in the commission's budget. So.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and let's plan on getting back together a little bit later in the year then.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks for letting us know. Our next item is consideration and possible approval of County Resolution, Resolution 2017-6 to provide support and a monetary contribution in conjunction with a, with federal economic development grant. Tammy will turn some time to you.
Tammy Urson-Bach, Economic Development Director. And thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to come and talk to you today. We have a grant that we're putting together. It's a $1.2 million grant from the EDA, the, the Economic Development Administration. It's a federal grant. The match that we have right now is just over 1.4 million. But it's to help to bring a lot, several businesses into the J.C. Penney Building. And so the match, the applicant and the administrator of the grant is not Carbon County, but Carbon, Emery are going to be support and co-applicants, but the actual applicant is Future and Design. So I've asked Nicola, Nicola Womack to come in and talk about the grant a little bit and talk about the match that we're doing. And then we also have a benefactor, beneficiary or, or, a benefic, thank you, a beneficiary or our anchor tenant that's here with us as well, which is Joel Smith.
Hello, Commissioners. Nice to meet you. Hi, I'm Nicola. I'm the Executive Director for Future and Design. So we have been working on, as Tammy said, this EDA grant for coal distressed communities. And what we're doing with Future and Design is we're a training, job training center. So we work with at this juncture, young adults, and we provide them training in coding and design and UX, also known in the tech world as UX, UI design. And we prepare them for, to be a pipeline of talent for the up-and-coming digital workforce to really kind of offset a lot of the talent shortages that our tech companies here in Utah are facing. We saw an amazing opportunity to be able to also work with some other training facilities and some local businesses that are willing to offer apprenticeships. And we would all run that out of the J.C. Penney Building. And it's, we're using the grant actually to become not just a capacity building grant, but that the grant and the project itself becomes self-sustaining for price. And so in turn, in addition to the training opportunities that we'll offer, which are an earn and learn opportunity and a work and learn opportunity, which I can go into more detail later, but also to be a business service center where we are able to offer services and incubating services for businesses. And these are with entities that have already been established within the Wasatch Front and have a good track record. So majority of all these businesses that we'll be bringing in, especially our anchor tenant, Accelerant. We also have another anchor tenant, Blacksmith International, which will be offering advanced manufacturing. They are established companies as well as our training center. So it's not a complete out-of-the-shoot startup. There's some track record behind everyone that will be, will be here. We're looking at, of course, I would forget this number. We're looking at about, within this first year, being able to create 150 jobs. By the end, the federal grant wants to see what we measure within the three, five and nine years. By the end of three years, we're envisioning 500 jobs. And by the end of nine years, we're envisioning, we are not envisioning, but projecting with the business model and the training model, 2,000 jobs. And the economic impact, one point.
It varies on the one, three, five, seven and nine, but at the end of the anticipation, I believe, with the last draft was around $700 million.
Yes, yes. The last, well, I know for nine years, we're at about 700 million for the economic impact, which will also, we have a great impact on the releasing burden off welfare services for the unemployment and stuff that has been prevalent here in the Carbon, Emery County.
Talk a little bit, talk a little bit about the, how far into the process you are, how you're working together with the state and the federal side of it, because that's an important part in these EDA grants.
Yeah. We are submitting the grant tomorrow. And we have GOED support, which is the Governor's Office of Economic Development. We've been working closely with Trent Thompson, who is the EDA director for, and the regional director for here in Colorado and Idaho, I believe. They are offering support. We are working with them to look at tax incentives for companies that are locating here. And also tax incentives for individuals after, for the companies when they hire the trained individuals. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Just because when we say EDA, that doesn't always translate to what that really means, but it's state support, federal grants. It just takes everybody's ability to put, put the numbers, to put the programs together to make it work.
That was the model. We're using a collective impact model. So where we're bringing nonprofit, the nonprofit services, the private entity and the government entity. And also we've been working with USU to see what we can do to assist and leverage resources between our programs and their programs as well. So it is the best way that I've, I've been doing nonprofit work for many, many years. And the best ones that we have results are when we use a collective impact model where we're able to bring private industry and the nonprofit industry together. Because what it does is it gives us a comprehensive approach to being able to assist an individual. Where many programs they have, they'll do one core competency very well, but the individuals that are needing services to be able to get back on their feet and get retrained or, or trained for careers, they still have other areas that they need to have addressed in order to be able to be sustained within their lives.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure. Good to see you three again.
Thank you.
We're happy to say that we meet with Health Equity again tomorrow for the planning for the next open enrollment period. And if everything works out, we'll be having Health Equity come into the J.C. Penney Building with us as well. Blacksmith International, that's been referred to, has 50 to 75 companies that they currently do sourcing, manufacturing. They've committed to bring 2.5 million of their already committed work to here source in the location. And we will have with Blacksmith a very impressive maker space that will be a sewing line as well as injection molding and everything else. We, we could probably have, provide for you what the anticipated spaces there. I don't think we mentioned Michael Ori, who's a local guy that has Ori Media and Studio 11. It's his plan to also bring in an interactive studio, post-production location that we would also have in the, the facility. So we're excited to be part of this, to continue to be part of the Price and Carbon County economy. And it's our goal to bring in within the next year, another three to five companies in conjunction, of course, with Tammy's fine work, along the lines of a Health Equity type of impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what he didn't say was with Blacksmith, those jobs are going to be brought back from China and brought back to the United States and brought back here to China, to Price, which is really exciting. So the purpose today is not only to inform you what's going on, get the support for you, for the, from the county for the grant, but also have a request of $10,000 a year for the next three years. I know that we're in a tight budget, but the, the EDA, the federal administration would like to see some type of a buy-in where there's a $1.4 million match. That $10,000 each year for the next three years isn't a lot of money, but it is important to match for the federal government to see that there's some type of buy-in from the county and support from the county. So that's why we're here today.
This is very similar to what we did with the University of Utah in regards to the carbon fiber project, just that they would like to see that support, but yes, some financial support.
Exactly.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I think it's a lot of great information and I'd like to see Nicola, you and Joel back to bring us an update in the near future of how things are progressing and everything like that. I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
Just, is this the, the motion to approve the resolution then?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I don't know that we've discussed the terms of the resolution exactly.
Do you want to go through those at this point?
Yeah, I could, if you don't mind, just point out that this is Resolution Number 2017-6. It states that you've been made aware that Future and Design is coming into town and intends to open and establish operations here and that you wish to demonstrate support for them as part of a, as part of the effort to help them secure the federal EDA grant. And to that end, you have agreed to match grant money that might be received by Future and Design in an amount up to $10,000 each year for the first three years that they receive their EDA grant funds. And you find generally that it's important to bring these kinds of new diverse businesses into the county to broaden the kind of business base that we have here.
Thank you, Christian. So we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-6 with that information. And a second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Can I add one more thing?
Please.
On August 9th at 3 o'clock right here in the commission chambers, we're going to have a press conference for the J.C. Penney Building. So not everything going into that building is going to be part of the EDA grant. So we'll be able to talk about more things that are going in and more things that are happening at that press conference. But today was specifically for the, the EDA grant. And then Joel wanted to make one comment.
As I've been a private participant with the 25K Jobs Tour and I've been to each of the 25, excuse me, the five stops that they've already had, I look for.
I look forward, knowing with the jobs fair that you've had here and how the city gets behind it, there has been good representation from private citizens and elected officials showing up in five of the community, in the five communities. There's been not so good appearance, and you've got some great people coming into town with the Lieutenant Governor and everything else. I'm, I just want to give a vote of confidence that I know that Carbon County will show up when they're here on the 9th. It's, it's a good thing that they have with all of the reinforcement, with the resources and everything else. But with the five that I've seen, and what I've seen in the past of what we have for support here for businesses coming to town, I look forward to when they have that to show here with Lieutenant Governor.
That, that is a good plug, Joel. And that day will be further advertised and put out because we want, you know, wide community involvement from the individuals to the companies and to the government. So we've had that initial planning meeting with, with the offices that are going to participate that. So anyway, very much we look forward to, to that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the 9th at, is it 3:00 or 5:00 at Tammy?
No, it's 5:00.
5:00 PM?
5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 is at 5:00, the press conferences at 3:00.
Right.
Yeah, 3:00 here, and then 5:00 to, 5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00.
At the, at the college, at the Jennifer Levitt Student Center.
Thank you.
More information coming on that. Thank you. Our next item is a report on a hazmat conference by Aaron Powell.
Hello, I'm Aaron Powell. This year I had the opportunity to attend the International Hazardous Materials Conference in Baltimore, Maryland. During the few days of the conference, I was given the opportunity to learn from leading experts, participate in hands-on training, and network with over 1,200 other first responders. This year's conference was filled with sessions designed to keep you up to date on the latest innovations and current product enhancements within the hazmat industry. For decades, many of those who have trained for, for and respond to incidents involving hazardous materials have done so based on lessons learned from the past. But each and every day, we face new challenges, leaving us to wonder what will happen next and when. A good hazmat team looks to the past and trains for what's in front of them today. A great hazmat team adds one more vital element. They plan for the future and realize that the future is now. That was the general overall theme of the conference this year was plan for the future, the future is now. Looking, going based on that theme, I, there's numerous classes to choose from. It's kind of like a kid in a candy store, you can't make a decision. I chose to attend some of the classes that were based on radiation due to possibility of a nuclear plant coming in this area close. Things I took away from the class is that there's a whole lot to, that I need to refresh upon and study. There's things that I, I learned before, but you just tend to forget them over the years. And we were able to talk to the instructor and get information on resources that we could use if an incident happened that was too big for us to handle, or just all the resources available. Probably my favorite class that I attended was one on the street drugs that are being used today and the lethal doses that those drugs have. In hazmat, we call it the LD-50, which is, would kill 50% of the population if they were exposed to a certain amount. They compared spice, carfentanil, fentanyl, heroin, a lot of the drugs that we're faced with today. They gave examples of officers being exposed to them and overdosing and dying within minutes of being exposed to carfentanil. That was a huge eye opener.
They didn't have free samples, did they?
No.
Oh, okay.
With carfentanil, the, the lethal dose on that was, they had a little vial. The lethal dose on that was the size of a grain of salt. Heroin, it had half the vial full of heroin was the lethal dose of heroin. So that just shows you how much powerful, more powerful and potent that drug is. And especially being on the SWAT team, that was a kind of an eye opener when we make entry into some of these homes of people that are drug users and distributors that, just how dangerous it could be when we come in contact with some of the drugs that they are spreading out there. So additionally, we also had the opportunity to meet with the different vendors. There was over 100 different vendors that are showcasing their products to help make our jobs more efficient and safer. They have been in contact with Justin Needles to kind of push their product. And we will go through and as a team kind of decide what, what can help us best and discuss and see if it's in the budget and go from there. But I want to thank you for allowing me to go and to gain this information and this extra knowledge.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Please.
I was just gonna thank you and, and show appreciation for bringing back what you've learned. I think it's really important whenever we send somebody out to gain this knowledge that can't be had here locally, that they are able to share it with everybody who wasn't able to go. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your good work, Aaron. Our next item is review and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding with Helper City for the placement of a radio tower on Phelps Hill. Barry, do you want to take that one?
Commissioners, you have before you an MOU with Helper City. We, we've met with Helper City and talked about the possibility of relocating our existing communications tower that's on Phelps Hill. What it would do is it would move it farther east to a better vantage point to better the communications for the public safety officers and, and response personnel. This would be at a Helper City site. We would like to improve that site by placing a new tower and also put in a backup generator as well. We already have a generator that we can use, we already have a tower that we can use that we salvaged from another site. So construction costs will be minimal, but the agreement tonight is, is in conjunction with Helper City to occupy that site. Whereas it'll mainly benefit Helper City directly, but also provide countywide coverage. We've asked them to cover utility bills for that, similar to how East Carbon covers utility bills for that communication site.
And it seems to all be in agreement for those items.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Barry. You're going to be here for a while, so we might as well just keep you. Our next one is a review and possible approval, excuse me, of a fiber use agreement with Emery Telcom.
Commissioner, this agreement, there was a version of this approved months ago. After the approval process took place, it was discovered there was a couple errors in the, in the footages of the fiber that we use from Emery Telcom. They've approached us to have us correct that, and it's, it's increased the cost of that slightly. And also in addition to that agreement, we'll be leasing some ethernet lines from them to connect to some far outreach, outreaching areas such as Ford Ridge and East Carbon. Currently, we struggle greatly with those areas, and quite frankly, they're key sites when it comes to growing our radio system to become digital. So this will alleviate administration overhead and, and make it more stable for the public safety.
And I know that Christian wanted to address some of the issues within the agreement itself, so.
I, I think another change, Barry, if I'm not mistaken, weren't you able to squeeze some more time for the length of this agreement? I think previously it was going to be maybe only five years, but now it's a 10-year agreement, which given the way prices go up, I think it's great to lock in the prices for as long as we have.
Correct.
I think that's a big advantage to us.
Yeah, it'll be a 10-year agreement on both the fiber and the ethernet circuits. Also, Christian reminded me earlier today that we do need to clean up some descriptions of the buildings in there.
Right.
So that's more common language to the county. So those changes will take place as well.
So commissioners, I don't have any objection to any of the numbers in here. It does say that we are to pay the past five years. We, we had not come to an agreement, part of the agreement is that we're going to pay for the use of the fiber for the five previous years through 2016. One thing I'm not clear on, Barry, is when they want us to pay for 2017, if we're just going to do that right up front along with all the previous five years. We could throw, if you look at paragraph 3C, it says, we'll pay for the past five years together with the maintenance payment in 2016. I don't know why we wouldn't just go ahead and pay 2017 now, if you're okay with changing that to that time period or not.
So actually, the, the dollar amounts will cover the, the last five years and the next 10. So we'll be paying an upfront cost, cost for actually all 15.
So we're going to pay it all at one time?
Correct. And that, that was by preference of, of the clerk auditor.
Okay, I might just want to amend it to say that that's exactly what we're going to do, just to add a paragraph or a sentence to say that. And then otherwise, I had some, as Barry mentioned, just some changes about how they described some of our buildings are, are inconsistent with how we internally describe them. I just wanted to clean that up. But otherwise, I'm, it sounds like we all are on the same page as to how much we're going to pay and when. And so I don't have any objection to the commission approving that tonight, if you want, subject to those changes being made. Of course, we can always bring it back to you again, but I'm fine with you going ahead and, going ahead and approving it, subject to Barry and Seth and me making those changes that we've discussed.
Commissioners, do you have a preference on that?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve with the changes as suggested.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So let's go ahead and work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one then is review and possible approval of a radio tower use agreement with River Canyon Wireless.
Commissioners, River Canyon Wireless currently leases space from us at other locations. We are adding a location due to a defect for our Woodhill site. We had to tear that tower down and we're reconstructing a new one. River Canyon approached us and said they would help us construct that. And in exchange for their labor for helping us, we would credit them some lease space and also add them into the, the new location as well. So the dollar amount.
I think we're charging $200 for each site that they're on, right, Barry?
Yes, correct. So this, this will create a fourth location for them. And so if you remember, we already have a credit with, or they have a credit with us due to the building we purchased from them. And so that credit is coming short. And so this will issue a new credit in exchange for the lease. Once that credit is used up, then they'll continue to pay us lease space.
Barry, remember that the credit was $10,000 for that building, right?
Yes, and, and we've, we, they've pretty well exhausted that, and so this will extend that a little bit.
Perfect. And Barry, am I correct in that the four sites that they're on are Four Mile Hill, Helper TV site, and then do we have a Woodhill TV site in addition to a Woodhill radio site? Are those all separate locations?
Those are the four.
And those are the four, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion?
And a second.
All in favor then?
Aye.
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 Okay, our next one is review and possible approval of a radio tower use agreement with Peak Mobile. Barry?
A similar agreement with what you saw with River Canyon Wireless. Peak Mobile is actually supplying us the communication tower for the Woodhill radio site. And so their credit will be along the lines of, of $12,000 for the value of the tower, at which time, when they take occupancy in our site, that's when their lease agreement will begin and apply that credit to them. Once, once the credit does expire, they'll continue to pay the lease space, such as we've done with all other tenants of the $200 million.
Any questions on that one?
I'll, I'll make an, a motion to approve the agreement with Peak Mobile.
And I'll second it.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks for having all the information for us, Barry.
Our next item is review and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding with UDOT for beautification events at 240. Commissioner Hopps, did you want to take that one?
Sure, and I'll have Christian help me. We, we have a economic development committee that has done an extensive amount of work in trying to coordinate with different entities in, in that economic development committee, they've identified multiple different areas that we can improve, one of which is the beautification of our, our streets and our exits. This specific MOU is exit 240, the first of the three exits to, to be beautified, potentially over the next several years. We, the next item on this agenda is, is an MOU with Price City. But this, this would allow us to go in and be able to make some modifications to the exit, to be a more attractive stop, to maybe drive some of those passerby's and bring them into our community to spend a few more dollars on their way to Lake Powell and, and other places. And as they stop, potentially, we have a, an opportunity to teach them or help them recognize some of the other places in our community and maybe spend some more dollars here. At first, there was a question about some of the language in the UDOT contract that they sent to us. Christian was able to work through some of those, send back and amended, or, or some language changes. UDOT was okay with those changes, and we had our, the, the trust, our insurance company, review those as well, and they're okay. They, they liked the changes at first. That's the reason why we had the changes made, is the, the trust was uncomfortable with, with some of the language in there. They are now comfortable with most of the language. They always have little hangups, but, but for the most part, they are comfortable with the language in here, and I think we can move forward with this project. Do you have anything else to add to that, Christian? You want to talk about the changes possibly?
Well, I would just state that, you know, they didn't like, the agreement did ask, did state that we would indemnify UDOT with respect to anything that happened on the interchange, if there was anybody who was injured on the interchange there. We got that changed to state that we will indemnify UDOT if Carbon County is negligent in any way in maintaining the landscape, scaping or taking any action that then directly leads to some kind of injury. And I think the trust is, likes that language better and is willing to insure us on this project because of that. So there would have to be negligence on the county's part before the trust would, before UDOT could come after the county for any, or before the, they could come after the county to contribute to any damages that they're assessed. So yes, I think we've satisfied the trust, we've limited our liability on it, and I'm comfortable with the agreement.
I guess one more thing to note, we have several partners in the beautification of this exit. UDOT has pledged $50,000. The hospital has pledged $10,000. $10,000. There are some other partners that have also stepped in.
$70,000.
So there's around $70,000 that will then be used for the purchase of materials to, to be placed. The county has pledged as part of their match into this to, to actually perform the work, to go in and place the gravel and, and do some of the design work. Jones and Emil has given in some, some of their time for, for the design of that facility or, or for the design of those exits. So we have substantial partners, and I think this will be a great project to, to kick off the beautification committee.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion.
And a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item goes right along with that then, and that is a review and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding. of a memorandum of understanding with Price City to pay for the annual maintenance of exit 240. Just a note before we get into that, that the city has not approved this MOU at this point in time, but we'd like to go ahead and move that forward.
So Commissioners, this simply, basically, this is in the form of a proposal to Price City. What we're asking them to do is primarily, most of the cost of the maintenance of the beautification project is going to be spraying for weeds. Is that correct Commissioner Hopes?
Correct. Most of, most of the improvements will be kind of a gravel, like a dry riverbed type of landscape. So we want to have the weeds controlled so that you can be able to see the different rock formations, however they lay them in there. Price City, in the initial conversations, had talked about agreeing to 5,000 a year for the next 10 years, up to $10,000, depending on the cost of the spray and the maintenance of that area. And so this is just that agreement. So if they approve it, then I think we have a project and we can move forward.
And Commissioners, I've included just a paragraph to say that since it's the county that's going to actually do the physical work, that will indemnify the city and hold them harmless from anything that happens on the site. So really, I've done that in an effort to make it as simple as possible for the city to decide, are we simply going to contribute financially or, and at what level? So that's really the question hopefully that they take up.
That was all I was going to bring up, is that the county labor would be, the county would be applying the weed spraying, taking care of the ongoing issues associated with that.
And Commissioners, just for the record, this interchange is within Price City limits, correct?
Correct.
This is the one nearest, I guess, to Market Express and the hospital?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Just for the record, so that people know, because I've had some questions recently to know why we're not putting any foliage on there, and it's because of the cost of upkeep, that we would have to ask Price City to, to help maintain and the cost to input, to put that in, just the electricity and the water and the pipes and everything that would cost was, was very substantial. And we wanted to keep the cost down as low as possible. I know that that's been one of the big questions, why aren't we putting trees and shrubs in there? But that's the reasoning. We wanted to keep this, the low, low maintenance and as inexpensive as possible, but yet really landscape it and make it look nice to pull people off the road, for businesses as well as tourists.
The original bid for some of that landscape with the trees and the shrubs and stuff was over 750,000.
Yeah.
It was very expensive. We're doing this mostly in-house with either county employees and materials produced at our gravel pits. Most of the rock will come from that. To give that contrast, because we have sandstone, that's where that other matching monies will go to buy some of that contrasting.
Exactly.
Rock. So we can try and make it look.
And there's only a few people here tonight, but I do know that there's people watching online, and I know that that's been one of the big questions. So I just wanted, I'm sorry to step in at the end, but I did want to let people know that, that we're trying to do this the best we can for the best for the community.
And there, there are a lot of those similar type interchanges throughout the state, especially in our drier areas, so.
Thank you.
And thanks to the committee for all their hard work. They never gave up. It's, it's been a year or more in the making to try and get to this point.
Thank you Commissioner. Next item is review and possible approval of UDPS Price Communication Cooperative Agreement for 911 Services for the fiscal year 2017 and 2018. I didn't know who was taking that one.
I think Seth's done most of the on-the-ground groundwork for it.
We should call him up, right?
So Commissioners, this is basically the agreement that we had talked about last week with, with the Price Communications Center, where they would be taking on all of the 911 funds. And then the, the numbers that were being allocated would change. This basically is a formalizing, or however you want to say that.
Formalized.
Formalized agreement between all of the entities. So there's Carbon County, East Carbon City, Helper City, Price City, Wellington City, and the Utah Department of Public Safety. And this is our agreement with them for the new, new function or the new way that it will function. Is that how you read that, Christian?
Yes, basically it sets up the structure for a governing body and who's on the advisory committee and how fees are to be allocated.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Our next item, we've had the request to table it for one more time, which was the review and possible adoption of the Carbon County Resource Management Plan. That would put it on the agenda for the first meeting in August, I believe it's August 2nd Rita. We need to pass it at that point in time, as per the state's request to have those in place, but we do have a, a request to table that at this time. It's not quite in its final stage.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it is pretty much all wrapped up, other than the consulting attorney needs time to review some of the last changes that have been made. So that's, that's where we're at with that.
Perfect. Next item is review and possible approval of an easement agreement in Beaver Creek with the BLM. Todd, do you want to take that one?
Thank you Commissioners, I've been, I met with the BLM last week. We've had some issues with allowing building permits in the Beaver Creek area, and one of those is part of our development code stating getting easements across federal land. In order to allow building permits to be allowed in Beaver Creek, I've worked with the BLM to make an application for a permanent easement or right-of-way across approximately 1,800 feet of BLM land that's in Beaver Creek. So this application would grant a permanent easement across that portion of BLM. So those individuals will always have access across that too, if they so choose to, if they were to build a cabin or access their property now. They've been able to access it, just we haven't issued building permits for it.
And when you say permanent, that's also synonymous as for perpetual, is that correct?
Yep, perpetual, yes.
There was one question raised to me that if you make this section of public, of the BLM property, if, if we take on the easement, then it would, it would mean that we needed to take over the entire road as a county road. Christian, can you advise us on that?
Well, yeah, I, I disagree with that. I don't think that's the case. I think that any person, any member of the public that legally gets to that section of BLM ground would then have the right to travel on that road as a member of the public because as Carbon County, we would not restrict travel on that road in any manner. As the road sits however, right now, it's a locked, there's a locked gate leading to that road, and you can only get there if you have a key. But I don't find that, I don't believe that there's any requirement on the county to open the rest of the road or take efforts to make the rest of the road public to all of the public. If you can legally get to that road as a member of the public, for whatever reason, however you do it, as long as it's legal, then you have the right to travel on that road as a member of the public. But I don't find that us taking a Title V right-of-way across that road at that point imposes on us a condition to take efforts to make the entirety of the rest of that road open to the public. To the extent that there's a concern that a member of the public might bring a lawsuit to say, hey, I can't get to that public road. You have to make that public road open to me and available to me. I'm not aware of a legal precedent that would require that. I'm willing to look a little closer, but I just don't think that's the case. I don't think BLM, for example, would, I know BLM's not requiring that of us. As a stipulation prior to BLM granting the Title V right-of-way, they would have told us so, so that's not going to come from the BLM. If it did come, it would come from a member of the public, and I think that member of the public would have to show more than he just simply wants to go onto that ground. It's already open to the public. In other words, if you can get there, BLM, as far as I'm aware, doesn't restrict anybody from using that ground for any of the other reasons you can access and use BLM property. So I think there'd have to be, I, I don't know that a, I don't think a suit to force the county to open up the rest of that road would be successful. I could be persuaded otherwise, but that's, that's my view of it on first glance.
And we would not be adding it to our B and C schedule?
No, there'd be no obligation for us to have to do that.
And, and I guess the only other warning would be that this doesn't guarantee access to, through the rest of the properties. That is, so if they do want to build, they would need, then need to get access, granted access through the private and also the sit la land. But that's outside of us. That's something that they would have to do before they can build on their properties. This just removes one of the hurdles for them to be able to proceed on, on their goals to improve their properties.
That is correct. And when I met the BLM, my question to them was, they can remain a private road, we don't have to declare it, you know, a county B road or county D road or anything that can remain public. They said yes, or excuse me, can remain private, that that section, it will be, remain private, that the county won't take any obligation on for that 1,800 feet. It just allows, it guarantees a perpetual easement across that section of BLM. So that's why I've brought it to the commission meeting for your guys' consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
It sounds like we've answered all the concerns that have been brought to us. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Our next item is consideration and possible approval of a recommendation from the Carbon County Planning Commission to amend lot lines in an existing subdivision, Westwood Four, Phase One, Amendment Two, for Ken Labrum.
Commissioners, I would point out that, as our applicant comes forward, that this kind of thing by state law does not require a public hearing. It can be approved by you without public hearing because of the fact it's a very, it's really a very simple matter, so.
Turn some time to you, if you'll introduce yourself please.
Ken Labrum, thank you for meeting with me, but apparently it wasn't unnecessary.
No, it's necessary. You need to be here. A public, a public hearing is different than a public meeting. By law, it is required to be approved by the Commissioners in an open public meeting. A public hearing is when anybody from the public can come up and say, and give reasons why they don't want this to happen, and it has to be advertised in that way. So I should have been more clear in saying, it doesn't require a public hearing that we open this item up for comment, but it does require that it be publicly considered in the open meeting by the Commissioners. Otherwise, no, it is necessary.
Okay, good.
So you're here for a good reason. It's good you came.
Here at the right time, right place.
Glad to have you here.
What you should be happy about is it's not going to be opened up for the whole world to comment on.
All right. Well, thank you very much gentlemen, I appreciate it. So really what happened, when I bought my house, the land next on the south side of my house, I just needed a bit more from Mr. Torgerson to park my fifth wheel, so I wasn't getting into anybody else's property. He went okay, or he okayed that and said that was okay with him. So I just needed it approved and I'll, you know, get that taken care of.
Looks like everything has been signed by the surrounding property owners.
Yep. And it doesn't affect anybody on that south side. It's just an empty.
It's an empty undeveloped lot at currently, so.
Right. The only one that it really affects is Mr. Torgerson with future developments, which any effect would be minor. We're only talking like six feet or something very small.
Correct, yes.
So.
I would make a motion to approve the Westwood Phase Four, or Westwood Four, Phase One, Amendment Two.
Have a, have a motion to approve that line adjustment or lot line adjustment?
And we have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Yep, have a good one.
Next item is consideration and possible approval of a letter expressing support for the development of a solar power farm outside of Helper. Tammy, do you want to talk about that one?
I've been working with this company for about a year and a half now, and many times solar companies come into the state of Utah and request incentives of quite a bit, including up to 70% tax abatement. This company has been very supportive of the Carbon County. They understand that, that not only is Helper struggling, but Carbon County is struggling and as well as the other cities. And they've been a very good steward for us, so they haven't asked for any incentives. The only thing that they've asked is that we grade our own county road and maybe waive, possibly waive some of the permitting fees, not the full amount, but just part of them, which we're grateful for. The other thing that they're doing is they're either going to bring in businesses with them, or they're going to find local businesses that can do some of the work that they're going to need after the fact, such as battery storage. And if they need battery storage and they don't have the company they're bringing in, then they will bring the blueprints and what they need to be designed and created here. So they've really been good stewards. The other thing that they've done is they've got some equipment that's needed, because right now in the state of Utah, we've got all these solar farms going in, but we don't have a place to dispose of the panels. And so they're bringing in the equipment that they're going to donate to ECDC so that we can actually dispose of those panels here in Utah and not send them out of state. So this letter of support is just saying, yes, the county is excited that we want them to come, we want to work with them, and they have, there's no incentives attached, there's no money attached, it's just what we can do to support them as a county.
And the letter itself is addressed to Rocky Mountain Power. I think that's important to note, too.
That was my next comment, thank you.
Hoping that they'll hook up with them.
Commissioners, if I might add, as far as the, my mind just drew a blank, but the permitting fees for, for the various work that our inspectors would have to go through, it would be several days of work. But in speaking to them, this size of a project, they would likely be able to complete all of that work, justify their time being spent there, and possibly waive up to two-thirds of the cost.
And they are already working with local businesses already, engineering firms as well as other firms, architects, lots of different firms. They want to use all local people that they can. So that was another benefit to them. I, I really am grateful to be able to work with this company because of the support that they've given the county.
You know, some of the other details that are here is it's a 100 megawatt proposed farm, be a $125 million investment. Construction would involve 100 to 125 people, and there would be 25 to 40 permanent jobs available with this project. So that's important information too.
And one more thing to mention, it would not be an eyesore off of the highway. It's not going to be in a visible location. It's in a perfect location for what it is.
In the interest of transparency, I believe one of the companies that they're working with is Nellco Contractors on some of the dirt work, so.
That is true.
I will abstain from this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll step down and second it. And then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noted with it, Commissioner Hopes is abstained.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your transparency there.
With Commissioner Hopes abstaining, would we need to then take his name off the signature page?
So we'll, we'll have that redone.
I apologize, it just hit me when we were sitting here.
Thank you. Our next item is review and possible approval of JCI Billing Service Agreement for Carbon County Ambulance. We can turn some time to Dawn and Commissioner Hopes on this one.
Okay, Commissioners, each year we have to re-sign a contract with our company that's been doing our billings for Carbon County Ambulance, which is JCI Billing in Tropic, Utah.
Tropic? Wow, that's a small place.
Tropic, it is a really small place. But they do us a great job. And so I thought I'd just give you a little bit of history. The three of you weren't here when we started this whole process, but as far as billing, we used to do it in-house. this whole process, but as far as billing, we used to do in-house. We had in-house billing. And we chose, back in 2005, to outsource that due to costs. And from 2005 to 2010, JCI Billing, they bill us per billable ambulance call. And from 2005 to 2010, they charged us $30 per billable call. And there were no increase in fees, and then up till 2015, we haven't had an increase. In 2015, we had an increase of $4, so we went up to $34. And now, in 2017, three years later, they're asking for $2 additional. With that, to be noted, is there are no additional fees. So, if that client that we have that is paying an ambulance bill, you know, it takes folks X amount of years. It's not typically months. JCI does not charge us anything extra to continually bill that. That is a one-time fee. There's no additional.
So, all the previous claims that they followed up on will not receive this additional fee. It'll only be future claims?
That is correct. The contract actually states, I believe, July 1st, and that is not actually true. It would start on the next billing cycle, which will actually be after July 15th, or, excuse me, yeah, we get billed on, we get billed on every 15th of the month. So, that cost wouldn't actually start until July 16th.
So, they'll prorate July, then, is what you're saying?
It would stay from July 1st to July 15th. Will stay at the $34. And then, from July 15th on, would go to $36.
That would need to be a change in this contract. Christian, I don't know if you have other information on that one, but, yeah, they're going to bill us on the 15th, but it's set to start July 1st.
Yes. I spoke with her just before our meeting tonight, and because she has already billed us up until July 15th, and the contract does say the 1st, it wouldn't actually start until after that. And also, just so you know, or have an idea, I mean, this is, obviously, it's per claim, and where we're obviously talking about budgets, we would be, my projection is about $2,400 a year increase.
Okay. Can we go ahead and prove it with a date change, Christian?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve with the amended changes of the 1st to the 16th.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I just have a comment there. I found it almost relieving to read her request. A lot of billing people are almost predatory in nature when they have a increase, and her words were, "At this time, in the uncomfortable position of requesting a slight rate increase." Anyway, it just made me smile in the sense that it wasn't phrased in the way that a lot of other people who are raising their bills phrase things. So, anyway, just pointing that out.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Our next item is a review and possible approval of an agreement with Price City to waive the building permit fees for a new communication tower on Wood Hill.
Commissioners, this is an agreement with Price City to have those fees waived with them. The justification being that it will primarily, the site will primarily benefit Price City officers amongst other county, but also the, our building department has agreed to take care of the inspections.
Have you had any input back from Price City then, at this point?
Price City has been favorable of it. They have a, we have a meeting on the 25th of next week for the conditional use proven.
And this is the same form that we've used to waive building permit fees for the District Courthouse, and I think it was also pretty similar to what we used for this building as well.
So, this is a request from us to Price City?
Right.
Well, and all it is, is allowing our inspectors to do the inspection and not charging for the service of their inspector that they have outsourced or
So, they won't have to bear the cost of labor. So, we're asking for that to be
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Price City to waive the building permit fees for the new Wood Hill Communication Tower.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Last item is a wildfire, wildland fire update from the Division of Forestry and Fire State Lands, but I don't see Jeremy
Commissioner, Rita informed us that she received a phone call from Jeremy, and he was, right before the meeting, called out on a fire. So, I'll make a motion to table this until the next meeting, if he's available.
Have a motion?
I'll second that motion to table until further updates are available.
Maybe we can take it based on his availability.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Or adjourned. Thank you.